And anybody got anything you want to add to this? Well, I'll start with, I'll call me in order and Reverend will call by about a second.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Clerk Pisha this morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Goodchild.
Here.
Commissioner Bardwell.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Lutz.
Here.
Commissioner Cook. We have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you. New business. Anybody got anything you want to add to this morning? We'll get started on a new business. Follow up on the board's commission request of economic development commission EDC fund this distribution, Mr. Jim Tussie.
Very good. Good morning. We have Alicia Proctor and Jim Tussie here. And we have three things on the agenda. I think the first one is just a summary what was called the SBR. And I misread it.
Will you please bring that up? Or tell me? I can click on it. How do I?
I can just keep talking. So the Commissioners requested a month or so ago for accounting. And so Alicia and I went back to the records and we found a document that I believe may have been presented to the board. I really don't know back in 2023. And the net of the $500,000 from a business view would be 30,000 plus 11,000 plus 6,000. That's the one went to the EDC for management. So roughly 10% of that. And that would be. So, so the EDC at the time, and I don't know the arrangement with the board that utilized 10% for management. During that era, the EDC management fees ranged from about five for other grants, about 5 to 12%. So the EDC Director at that time chose about 10. Now, for the people, there's a list. It's hard to see. It's under the Cass City title. But the people that were given to would be Bulldog Cleaning, 1,300. There's an easier way. Would you like me to read through it? How would you like me to? There's a few details, but the names, it's divided into two columns. One is what was given in the grant and one was given in the SBS in the revolving fund. And so of note, the Director at the time chose, and the Board would have voted on it, to put of the 500,000, 366 into the grant program and 91,000 into the revolving fund. So of that grant, 91,000 will be reused in time at the EDC as those loans are repaid. So a quick summary in very round numbers, 500,000, 50,000 went for management, 366 went for grants, and 91,000 went into the revolving loan fund. And then it was dispersed into various businesses in Cass City and Millington, Basser, Reese, Caro, Kingston, and Unionville.
Any questions?
I have one.
Chairman, I have one. Go ahead.
So the loans was 91,000. You've only received 5,000 back so far?
This was all dated in 2023. It has not been updated.
Okay, all right.
So, Chairman.
Yeah.
So the purpose of this, Jim, is to what? Update the board on the spending and the progress?
I believe the request at the time was that the Board requested some accounting of how the 500,000 was dispersed.
And those are the entities on the left-hand side of the spreadsheet?
Right.
So today, what is left? What is left?
Technically, 11,300 is still in the fund. And that's in.
So Jim, you don't know?
Based on this document.
Jim, you don't know what the update is on the loan payment received back?
No, but the loans have, as far as our accounts in the rear, no one is more than a few months back. So at this time, overall, so they've been paying.
So the impact of the community, although it's hard to assess it now, I suppose, was substantial at the time from your assessments and looking at this? Or how would you describe it?
I can state for the meetings that I was in attendance that all the people receiving it were very pleased. And that some of these have gone to smaller businesses and to some that are expanding.
From the looks of the list, it appears that I'm missing one. They're all still in business.
The Buddy Group is larger.
I mean, they're all viable entities today, correct?
Yes, they, I'm not certain about a couple of them, like Bulldog, but for the most part, they're all viable today. So that would be a positive that these businesses have not gone a different direction.
Where's, what's their base? Was there an update on like the Strand Theater?
We have not received one from Mr. Anderson recently.
So what is the typical process in looking for Strand Theater amounts? What's the typical process? They're three months or six months overdue?
Thankfully, with encouragement, we really haven't had businesses that have not paid. Sometimes they go on a little bit of a respite, it seems, as all of us can. But they've all been paying from the records that we have so far.
So Chairman, all in all, Jim, and I know you stepped into this, but you were involved in it from the very beginning at some aspect, I'm sure, a little bit. But it was a successful endeavor compared to not being successful. The businesses are still in existence today, but.
I would say it has been successful because I think as you pointed out that virtually all the businesses are all still operating. And one of the goals of the EDC at the time was to give a push to those businesses that had already been moving rather than to fund startups. So the EDC Board at the time voted to encourage businesses that had already been shown having to have made progress rather than to take guesses on business. So there were probably equal number of businesses that were rejected about because they were startup in nature. And like any startup business, it always sounds good. But we, the Board at the time narrowed down and put the criteria that a business had to have already been in business for a period of time and shown progress and that this would help them better serve the community, better secure their business for the future.
And Chairman, for Jim, has the admin fee, the 10%, which was looking for the dollar amount?
Well, it's a combination, the way it was accounting. Commissioner Bardwell, there was in a summary, there was 30,000 that was taken out at first. And there's 11,000 that remains in the fund. Then in the lower left-hand corner, you'll see TEC administrative costs and attorney costs. So you can see for the TEC, there's another.
6,000?
Yeah, 6,000.
Yeah, it's.
So did it exceed the admin? Or, well, my original question was going to be, the admin fee had been consumed?
I think it's in the range. If it would have been 20%, that would have been not what grants normally were managed as. I do not understand the accounting because from the records, there was the 30,000 that was taken out at the top. And then there were additional fees, and then you have the remaining balance. So I think the easiest way to look at this is of the 500,000, the 366 was given in grants and of that 91 was given out called loans. And so those two numbers equal about 450. And so whatever is remaining is by default right now a fee. Because based on these numbers, there's 11,000 that has not been dispensed. And that's one of the questions today. It looks like for proper fund management here that the EDC should find a recipient for 11,300 to complete the original charter of this $500,000 grant. And that's one of my recommendations. And that would lower the admin fees down to about 8%, 8%.
Was the admin fee from your knowledge, whatever it was, was it proportioned over a number of years or was it just spent as needed? In other words, today, I was just assuming when I was asking that question, there is no more admin fee left. And this is just, you're just doing it. EDC is just administering it. It's all been consumed.
At this time, the EDC has 13 bank accounts. And in 13 bank accounts with payments coming in and payments coming out. And due to the age of this, it's literally impossible to try to track exactly where where the deposits went and where the checks went from. We do have our accounting system. In late of 2022, the Board voted to empower Anderson Tucky with more accounting. They were not responsible for stating which accounts, general ledger accounts, transactions came from. They're only responsible to make sure that the accounting system itself, that no one else could touch it besides Anderson Tucky. So looking at the accounting system, we've done spot checks on these transactions and we have found checks written to the entities here. And so from the accounting perspective, we know, but the bank accounts, we can't drill back down that further. There's a lot of churn. There's a lot of postings in the bank accounts that were by mistake. And then they had to be transferred out from those bank accounts back into the general fund or into the SBR account. So that's one of the reasons in 2024, we were successful in bringing the bank accounts down to just three, which would be the general fund and the revolving loan fund and the grant fund.
Chairman, another question. Back in those days, were there any audit notes that would, from Anderson Tucky, that would have addressed this number of bank accounts and the financial procedures that they were using at the time? Was there anything back then that was flagged?
At this era, the EDC was fully in charge of stating which accounts were used. And Anderson Tucky just made sure that the debits and credits were applied and that whether it was an expense or a liability or an asset or revenue, that they're posted into the general categories. But the EDC was responsible for choosing which accounts things were put into.
And Chairman, a main question. So I guess summing it up, is it true or correct saying remaining funds for the SBR, 11,300? If you found a candidate that that was viable to take those funds, you pretty much have concluded the 500,000?
Before you requested for the summary, we did not know that there was 11,300 remaining. And we're not even certain that it hasn't been dispensed. All we have is this record. But in the due diligence that we've done, there's no information to state that it does not exist. So to put that in the affirmative, it'd be the EDC's recommendation that we find a grant recipient for the 11,300 to complete the loan or the grant process for this because we have no records to dispute the 11,300.
And the 11,300 is, it's not just a paper number. It's actually cash in some account, right?
Yes, it would have been cash in some account.
All right. Just so it's not a paper transaction, you'd have to come up 11,300. If you proceeded, you didn't have 11,300 somewhere. A very interesting conversation here of the past in terms of what happened to 500,000 and the effect of it. But certainly the impact of all the businesses that received it. Do you, do you think that there are 50%, I don't remember the terms of these, of these grants or loans. Was it how many years?
Most of the loans were five.
Five years? So well into 50% through that?
And the fact that some were put into the revolving fund means they're just going to be reusable by the EDC in the future?
No further questions, Chairman?
Yeah, Jim, we appreciate bringing this into business. I was glad, in fact, it did help a lot of businesses. And I think it's one of our goals, we asked for this to make sure that, you know, it all goes wherever it went. And if I get it, it was distributed pretty equally across the board. Any more questions for EDC on this topic? Appreciate that. But that will move on to number two, the Economic Development Commission request. Well, the Board of Commissioners to re-estate active EDC Board member.
Jody, you want me to jump in or you want to jump in first?
Your preference.
Please continue.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Tussie and I have reviewed the list of board members that my office had on file. As you may remember, the previous EDC Board was large. And the current EDC direction is to bring that board back into a more manageable number and in accordance to their bylaws. Mr. Tussie has given me an updated copy of the bylaws, so we will place that on file. So that's very helpful. But in that bylaws, it says a board can be a member of nine to 11. So what we would like to effectuate at this time is the restructuring of that board. Some of the members that they are going to be retaining on that active board currently are appointed and have an expiration date ending December 20th, or excuse me, December 31st of 2025 or 2026. Some of those members expired in 2024. So we need to infectuate a reappointment date, non-pro-tunk, back to January 1st so that any decisions of that board would be made whole. I'm very hopeful with our new EDC Director and Board that our relationship between the EDC and the County Clerk's Office will be mended and will be moving forward in a much more positive manner. As you know, this was a struggle for us to gain this information. Mr. Tussie has been extremely helpful in communicating with that. So we would like to have 11 people appointed as the active board members as well as Commissioner Bardwell be a voting member on that rather than just a liaison. So the active members for that board would begin with John Till, Thomas Bardwell, Jim Tussie, Joe Green, Brian Newville, Rose Putnam, Robert Wallach, Kim Vaughn, Debbie Powell, Mike Patello, and Brandon Lee. I would like to present a prepared motion to the Controller Administrator's Office that would delineate those members as well as their expiration dates, the ones that need to be expiring, excuse me, started back up as of January 1st. And then we will look at where our balance is as to which term Commissioner Bardwell and Brandon Lee would need to be appointed to as like a partial term so that we don't have a whole board turning over at once. The bylaws delineate that it needs to be expiring on a rotating basis. So I'll look at that and present that for adoption on Monday. We do have nine members that have resigned as well. Some of those terms have already expired. Some are still active terms. So those seats are still considered active. So I would like to also prepare a motion that we remove those open positions from the board, thus decreasing the size of that board. The members have already resigned. The seats are just kind of sitting, hanging out. So to clean that part up as well. And then we have 10 various members that have had three or more absences and are not able to continue. So it does take action of the Board of Commissioners to remove those members per the recommendation of the EDC Board based on those number of absences. And we would like to, at that point, remove those 10 seats as well. So in essence, we're going to be removing 19 seats from the EDC Board, leaving it with 11 active. So.
Any questions for?
Did that summarize our goal?
Any questions for, I clicked out all of them?
You're going to bring that back Thursday, right, Jody?
Yes, Commissioners. I will get a motion prepared so that it's worded how we need it. And I have Mr. Tussie review that and Ms. Proctor to make sure that we're all engaged. So moving forward, the seats that are expiring in 2025, we can get back on our reappointment that we do every fall. And we'll get those seats reappointed to the six-year term and we'll get everything in a positive, forward-moving fashion moving here forward so that their board can effectively do the work that they need to do as well.
Yeah, because that's always been a big discussion about how many people are on that board, who you allow, who you don't allow. It's always been, you know.
Always. I'm very hopeful that with new leadership in place that, you know, we have a, like I said, that working relationship has been mended and I think we'll be in a much better spot for all of us moving forward. I'm very hopeful for that. So, yeah. I would ask, I think that we can do this just on the consent agenda. But I would ask that we have three items on the consent, that they're like in three separate so that we can handle each group one at a time. But I would be fine with that on the consent agenda. That would be acceptable to you.
Yeah. More of a consent agenda or would you rather have a motion on it?
It'll save you some speaking if we do it on the consent agenda.
Well, I'm right there.
Thank you very much.
That takes care of number two then, Mr. Tussie. We'll move on to number three.
Number three.
The Economic Development Commission Tuscaloosa County Draft Lease Agreement.
Yes, the Commissioners requested that at the last meeting, that the EDC review the MSU extension agreement with the county and to put together an agreement that is comparable. So that agreement is more or less a facsimile of what the MSU extension used with terminology more appropriate for the EDC. And also some conduct verbiage in there for that the EDC would not in any way negatively affect the MSU extension. And Carly Krieger is seeing that. She's very encouraged to have the EDC there. She thinks there's quite a few positives. To use a word from the 80s, synergy that could take place with having two groups that serve the community in one building. There are questions about receptionists and such. The EDC is basically a self-standing. Right now, we have the Assistant Director and the Director. They will be in the offices there. They will have keys to the building, but for the most part, their operation will be hours of the MSU extension. They'll have access to the bathrooms and the kitchen and the conference room. But otherwise, there's not really a co-mingling of services. We've spoken with Eon and that with the EDC, we will be managing our own network and phones. And so there really is no crossover. This is nothing. There'll be no burden on the county or the load compared to where the EDC is currently. The county did not manage phones or network or security. And this will be the same situation even though they're inside that building. Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
What about the light bill and the rent? I mean, where you're at now, what are you doing?
What are we going to do? Are the dollars?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you're paying rent and a light bill right now where you're at, correct?
Right. Where they are currently, there's pay for the own internet and then there's other services that are that the EDC must pay in that building that are wired for that, those offices. So those, those are obviously with the lease expiry there. Those services won't be paid. So the current building will be fully vacated.
So are you going to pay rent and electric bill where you're going to the MSU?
Carly Krieger did not state that she expected us to have to have any rent charges. She was happy to have the space being used and felt that it was a very good matchup for what the MSU Charter is, which is education. And that's certainly an overlap of the EDC education.
Commissioner Lutz, the EDC building is a county building, not a MSU. Well, Chairman, I'm very pleased knowing the history and the Anderson Building was there and before that it was well utilized. But I think in light of everything, I really am pleased to see that moved into the MSU, I think it saves a lot of expense on the EDC part that we were at that point. I mean, the members of that decade would know better than I, being expended. And certainly, it seems like a good move for the county because it is consolidation. And there appears to be room. I mean, I can't think of a negative to it at this point. And I would think that you would have thought about it and Carly would have thought about it. If there had been a negative, but it doesn't seem there are any. Are there?
I think the only negatives would be if MSU turned out to be a bad player or the EDC were a bad tenant. And right now, I think where the EDC is and where MSU is, that we're very compatible. Carly Krieger was on the EDC Board. She has asked to step down. But she's still going to be visiting. Her office is just one place away. And so I believe there's very good overlap for two groups that serve the community and particularly Tuscaloosa County to be in the same place, to be aware for how the EDC can better help MSU and how MSU Extension can better help the EDC. I think they're both parallel in their charters.
So right now, who pays the utilities? Do we pay them the utilities to the county or does that, or does that MSU?
I do not know who pays the utilities.
So we pay for the utilities. And I agree, you know, with Mr. Bardwell too. I think, you know, it's a good move. The only question that comes to mind again, the only question is the mortgage. You know, the mortgage funds.
It's the what?
The mortgage funds, you know. Because that's basically what it's paid with, right? It's the mortgage funds. So that's the only, that's the only thing. I mean, I think it's a great move. That saves money. And I think EDC needs to be operated with. And I think EDC needs to be operating through this, not so much through this county.
Mr. Chair.
But that's.
It is paid from the general fund.
Yeah.
I apologize, it's paid from the general fund.
Through the general fund, not the mileage funds.
Not the mileage fund, it's paid from the general fund.
But this, you know, the, that's kind of puts that the rest a little bit too. You know, it's paid through the general fund.
I guess that's what I was getting at, I didn't know who paid for what. If it was coming out of the general fund, if it was coming out of the mileage funds.
It's coming from the general fund.
It's just off the board. I mean, I am, we'll keep it to where it's all up to the board. We're paying the, well, you know, the utility cost for EDC. I, we've talked about this before.
Yeah, Chairman, I was thinking that, and you and I probably got the longest history of this, but it seems like the conversation, I may be entirely misled. The county provided that building to MSU. That was part of the agreement back then when a lot of things were going on. And the mileage was not for the building, I think it was more for funding the, the MSU Extension. And I just felt that, I mean, I thought they were just separate. The county provided the building, paid for it, and there was no rent that I remember. And it was a convenience for the county, I mean, for the residents of the county. So I think that's what you're saying, in the sense they are separate, one's general and one's mileage. But I, again, the mileage money was always going towards operations.
Yeah, it's operating.
Operating, yeah. I think that's where we're ended up.
I think so.
And again, as long as the people understand that, you know, we're not using this, but was that has been designated to MSU or EDC, it's separate. That's why I want the people to understand that, that that's not an issue, that's not what we're trying to do here.
I want to give a call out to the MSU Extension Group because they're the ones that actually offered this as a, as an idea for the EDC when they saw the needs. And so from, I, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but from what I observe, they're willing to share their space because it hasn't been used for years. And so it's unused space. And they're willing to share it because they really see that there's a, an overlap of service in the community. From what I understand, they, they don't have to share it naturally. And I know that's a county situation, but their view of the building is that they get to do with the building as they think best to serve the community through the extension. And so we're grateful that they made the offer for the EDC to, to be co-tenants in there. And again, we're very low footprint, so we're, we're not going to drag on them, but we actually will probably assist because, again, both of our charters overlap with education. EDC with businesses and then MSU Extension, obviously with businesses and others. And so I think it's a good mix. And I, I believe the, from speaking with the people, there's five, six people that work in that building. And, and they're all encouraged, you know, it's great to have the EDC here, that'll be nice. So I, I believe that it's really a good move for the county as a whole because the county, as Commissioner Bardwell stated, it does provide the building for the MSU Extension. And so the county is, is already footing the bill to get the extension into Tuscaloosa. And for us to be able to piggyback on that as a service serving the community, I think is right on board with what the county would want the EDC to be doing. And then focusing our monies on taking care of the community instead of paying rent. I mean, that's it. I mean, the monies are going to go to helping the community, the monies are going to go for electricity. And right now, this is a better use of those. And it's about $20,000 a year saved in, in, in organization and giving us better visibility for what we're doing. Because everyone who walks into the extension is going to know the EDC is there. Right now, a lot of people don't even know where the EDC is.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question on the lease, if I may, or on the agreement, if I may.
Okay.
It has a date of January 1, 2025. Are we, it is your request that we're going to backdate it back to January? Or was that a typo and this was supposed to be 2026?
That, that was a loose discussion with MSU with the idea, we did not know where the county would want us to go with that. So that date may be overwritten with whatever the current date is.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, this has not been reviewed by legal yet. I don't know if that's required, but I reviewed it, but I was waiting for direction from the board. Thank you.
Personally, I read it over. I have not, personally, I have legal review of myself, you know, on this contract with EDC and MSU. It's pretty, pretty blank what, what it is. But it's up to the board, whatever.
Chairman, wasn't this agreement sort of a template off the MSU agreement? I mean, you just sort of reworded.
Right, it just basically removed the parts that were specific to MSU and replaced some parts for the EDC.
Chairman, I don't see any, I mean, I'm not a lawyer either, but I didn't see anything glaring here. I was looking for the termination, if one wanted the other, if EDC decided to have the building on their own or something, but there's no termination clause and it's just perpetual, isn't it? Did I miss something? Or does it model the EDC agreement?
I, I think, I thought there was a termination.
Section four.
Section four? Oh, yes, section four. All right. Well, in that case, Chairman, I don't see anything legally that would be, raise an issue unless you do or.
I, I don't.
I didn't see nothing. I don't see no sense of spending money on attorney court.
Mr. Chair, also, what about liability insurance? Will the EDC be duly insured? So we would cover the building and there would be some sort of policy from the EDC as well?
Well, there's liability at facility. So there was no discussion about facility insurance.
Okay.
And liability, right now, the MSU manages any visitors in and out. So it was not requested that the EDC carry separate liability insurance.
Okay. I don't know if there were to be an injury and it was a person there to visit the EDC, would the MSUE policy deny any claim? And if that was the case, would that liability fall back on the county is my only concern.
It'd be a county, since it's a county building. But it's an interesting question. Well, where would the liability have fallen if it was just MSU in that building and there was an injury? Would it be any different?
Correct, if the MSU has their own liability insurance, it would fall to them first. And then after that, it would fall to us as the property owner. I have not seen any, any.
Would it not depend on the nature of the injury? Because if it was caused by structural versus something pertaining to MSU, but since the county owns the building, if they tripped over the doorstep, you know, they tripped in the parking lot and they tripped, you know? I'm not sure how MSU would be liable unless they contributed to causing that and that the, and the she would say, well, we needed, we asked to get the parking lot, you know, salt on the ice. Sure, I mean, that's, you say that we're going to that. But you ask an interesting question, I, I'm just thinking.
Do you guys have your own liability policy?
I'm not sure, I'm looking over the, I don't see anything.
I know all my, all my.
Maybe we're just weird, just covering.
Those I have, you know, I gotta carry liability on them, you know?
Yourself, yeah.
Yeah, I have to carry liability on myself, you know, because that one goes.
And perhaps the county, you know, is the sole liability carrier on the building. I have not reviewed any, our policy to determine. I know that that building is listed on our policy as, but that's the extent of my research.
Normally, if you'd rent, you're exactly right, the renter would have to carry some liability. That's an interesting question, if there's ever a legal question to ask, but that would be one in terms of culpability, who else's luck?
Right.
Since it's owned by the county, but you can buy it to MSU and EDC. How would that? That might be the question that you're going to ask.
So Chair, so I don't know, so how do they, we do the parking lot? Do we do that parking lot in the wintertime? Yeah. And we mow the grass there, with little bits there? Yeah, okay.
That might be the only question to ask, like you said, I mean, I never think I have, you know, being the property owner, I have liability, you know, I have to pay liability on the grounds, on the buildings itself, you know? Then the renter takes care of the fires or whatever.
Well, for the sake of brevity, unless there's an opposition, I would have that portion just.
Let's put this together as a motion for Thursday.
Could be that.
Meanwhile, that might be one question we might want to ask the attorney, you know what I'm saying? For clarity, we'll have that back Thursday. I, I think we put motion up Thursday, gets this done, because this is a struggle for you guys to, you know, to get this all done with, we can get back to business.
We've been exposed a long time with MSU without realizing the, maybe the potential of it. And I would hate to have this held up for.
Yeah.
An opinion.
So let's maybe ask that question, have that ready for Thursday, but let's put motion together for, to move forward with it.
And what effective date would you like that motion to be, Thursday's date?
Yeah, unless there's some reason not.
Thursday's date will be fine.
Okay, thank you. I'll have to break this.
I would propose that, Chairman.
Yep.
Yes, please. Thank you so much.
All right, any more questions on that? I think we're all settled.
If there are no other questions, then we'll let you get back to your other business.
Thank you. Number four under the business is a request, purchase additional foggy material. There is that for.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I simply have a request for you this morning. I'd, I'd like to request to purchase some additional truck bogging material from Visiris Incorporated. Visiris is the current company that, that we do use to purchase our truck fogging material from. I have, I have two reasons for this request. The first reason is in, just in case we need to extend our truck fogging season a little bit farther this year, which would push us into the first or second week of October, I want to make sure we have enough on hand, which we currently do have enough to, to go to the end of September. But it's always have, nice to have a little more on hand, give us a little, a little cushion there. And this is all weather dependent as well. As, as you all know, when those temperatures hit 50 degrees or below, we're required by law to stop fogging at that point. But I just want to make sure we have enough on hand if we need to extend that season. That second reason I'd like to make this purchase is to possibly save us some money. We're currently locked into a price with Visiris at $22.68 a gallon. That lock-in price is good till December 31st of this year. So if we make this purchase, whatever we don't use is just going to carry over to the next season. It, it has good shelf life, there's no worries about that. So the other only, the, something other else I'd like to, to bring to your attention, if you look in our department budget, under line item mosquito abatement material, it shows we have a little over $90,000 in that line item. When we received our last shipment from Visiris, they billed us for $89,000. And on top of that bill, they billed us tax on that as well. So I resubmitted that bill back to them so they could correct it. I'm just waiting for that to return. So in, in reality, that line item under mosquito abatement material, there's only about $1,300 available there. I just wanted to clear that up with you in case you notice that on our budget. So I'd like to purchase three additional totes. That, that cost would come to $18,711. I'd like to request a, those funds be transferred from Tire Cleanup. Because of Mike Miller was able to get a, a grant to recycle our tires this year, Mike saved us $12,000. In a normal season, we would, we would donate that $12,000 to recycling for Mike to do tire cleanup throughout the townships and the counties. So we save some money there, thanks to Mike, and I appreciate that. So I'd like to use those funds as long, and additionally, I'd like to transfer $6,711 as well from our equipment, repair and maintenance fund. And that would, that would cover the entire cost of, of the $18,711, the cost of the three additional totes. It, I do, I do predict next year, this material will, will be $23 a gallon or more. As you all know, the cost of everything continues to go up. So I, I really don't see a, a negative aspect of, of making a purchase now and, and possibly saving us some money here in the future, so. Other than that, that's, that's all I have for you, unless you have any questions for me.
Chairman, Larry, this is an opportunity to this, but the 2268, what do you anticipate that going up to based on past history after December 2025?
When I, when I spoke with the vendor about this, he was predicting right around $23.30, somewhere in that, that vicinity. He, he, he thought it would stay under 23.50. Hopefully, it stays under 23, but I never, I never really know how that goes till we get down to the insecticide bid coming up in January. But that was, that was his prediction, was right, right around 23.30 next year a gallon.
Okay, just here.
Yep.
No further questions, Chairman.
Chair, can we put this on the consent agenda?
Oh, with the transfers and everything, how?
Oh, you want that with money, you want a motion?
I think we can do it on the consent agenda, but I would bet.
If we got anything to add.
I do have a copy of his budget, if any, if, if you would like to see it. I was following along with him and he's accurate in the numbers that he's stating. And I think we could do a consent agenda if Madam Clerk is acceptable.
Okay.
We're not asking, he's not asking for any additional funds, it's just transferring within his own budget.
And the motion will have the line items that are assigned and as long as it's cleared that way, so I think we're fine.
We appreciate the clear request, Larry, that was.
Oh, absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely. Great.
Good, Larry, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioners, appreciate it.
Thank you. Move on to number five, rules that Tuscaloosa County drains, stormwater drains, that hood.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So I did email out the whole packet of the stormwater, I do have a couple copies here.
Is this, this responsible here?
If they couldn't have it all, they might be in there. Sorry about all the people. And if somebody may remember, back in March when I presented the annual report, I did direct the board that I was working on the stormwater to update this. Over the years, it's been pieced together, a little bit here, a little bit there. And now, after working many hours putting this together, it compiles it all into one spot. This manual helps with any form of development throughout the county, whether it is going through with, you know, mention of solar farms or any type of new construction, whether it's a new subdivision or a new building like a Walmart or something of that nature. This right here sets parameters for all the questions that I constantly get asked. It goes through all our community process, it goes through all the information as far as detention and runoff and things of that nature. What I'm asking the board for. What I'm asking the board for today is if you had a chance for you to give any questions for me, please ask, but to adopt this so then I can put this out onto our county website so we can direct a lot of our phone calls there. This works with phone electric, DTE, any form of development whatsoever. This also goes through our permitting, it has a copy of our permits in here, what the requirements are for, like right now, we're working a lot with fiber. And they're putting in the new cables and they have to comply with our rules about boring right at the county drainage, how far they have to go, everything is illustrated in here. So instead of us trying to answer all these questions that we constantly get, we can say, okay, go to our county website, go to the Drain Commission, all the information is in black and white. So that's what I'm asking for today. I got several copies, if anybody would like some good reading material.
No, I said, I went over, I listened. This wraps it up, puts them on.
It does, and it does help us on our end, because we do get a lot, lot of questions. And being I have a little bit of a newer staff, not understanding some of the questions that are being, that are being asked, they can direct them to these questions if I'm not available. They can go right to here, they can look up the information, it's there for them.
Chairman, will Safeville get a copy of that?
Yes, I can provide them with that.
I would think since they're giving out permits, they'd say, hey, you know.
Yep.
Now, if your questions, Chairman. There, this is basically codifying or bringing together, I think that how you was started a lot of, a lot of policies that existed, but not in one place. Is that how this all started?
Good question. I was going there.
That would be 100%, should you say, yes.
And under this, when you brought all those pieces together, what percent, how much new did you have to add to this? Or did you just consolidate?
Pretty much what is, what we did, pretty much what we're updating for the most part, what is new is obviously our fees. We, you know, permitting fees and things of that nature have increased from year to year, and there is verbiage in here that allows any updates of that nature. There has been other things that have come into play with setbacks, things of that nature that have come into play at the township levels as far as, you know, with our drain rightaways and, you know, being out of the rightaways and setback from property lines and building things of that nature. Those have been updated to comply with like the new laws as far as like with the Land Division Act and everything that is pretty much right on the front cover here with the drain code and Division Act, any type of development, things of that nature. So those things have been updated accordingly. But as far as anything new, new, no. Like I said, everything has always kind of been here, but it's been here, there, everywhere. Now we're kind of put it into one manual per site.
And the setbacks, you know, from the edge of a drain have been updated, they've been increased?
No, what we have been working with and which with GSI, with coding and stuff like that, is our rightaways are out there too. So we get a lot of calls too, okay, you know, you guys got a county drain here, it's the king drain, what's the rightaway, what do we have to stay off? We can direct them to that, they can click on the drain, the information is there.
Is there any setbacks included in agriculture where a lot of the drains go through farmland? How close you can farm next to a drain?
Well, once again, we go into the rules of it's our drain rightaway.
Check on the site. You're going to the ones you're trying to avoid here.
They have taken away, a lot of, a lot of farmers have gone away from the set aside, you know, the crabland against the drains. The programs are not there, farmers aren't being paid for the land being set aside. So unfortunately, we're running more into...
Not the set aside, I meant a lot of farmers.
Because they're along the drains.
They'll...
And that's where we come in, we, we like those programs because obviously they kept them off the ditch banks, they kept them off of farming so close, but now that those programs are gone, we are running into that, where they are farming really close. And as with every drain project, in the letters that we sent out, we have a project coming. If it's a 25, 26 project, you go to plant your crops, you are taking that risk of knowing that we have a project coming and that we will be within our rightaway. And if we go over your crops, that is a chance you're taking and we, we won't pay crop damage, especially not within the rightaway.
So a lot of farmers, as long as they're not, you know, violating something, a spill over in a drainage ditch, are near the edge unless there's a road or path.
Yes, they are.
And we understand it. The other question, I know it's in here somewhere, so if a landlord decides to clean his ditch on his own, clean out his ditch, because it's cheaper for the residents and it's only to, usually it's done because of drain tiles going through and because you can't, all right. And you're looking at me like I know a little bit about this.
No, I'm just looking at it because we do have a few of those and we had a few situations already in the past that has put us in tough positions because if a property owner wants to go clear out trees, have at it. But when it comes to any form of excavating out of a drain, because unless they are approved contractor on one of our list, we, I have to admit to you, we definitely frown upon it because we run into situations where they've over excavated or they pull back to slopes or they rip out slums, and next thing you know, we have erosion problems.
Approved contractor.
Correct. And that information is on our website.
And to get to be an approved contractor, is it difficult?
No, we have an application, they have to fill out, we have, we look for experience, where have they worked, have they done any type of county drain pipe work before? And we will check references.
Okay, only because we have half a drain, things up. But anyway, I just wondered, we'll just send them here. And usually these are tenants, you know, someone's lease that come in, want to clean it up. But any rate, is this sort of modeled after other counties as well? So there's not any, like here on...
This actually does mirror a lot of our surrounding counties.
Okay.
Like the Pier, Santa Lake, yes. Because we're neighboring counties, a lot of, we have inter-counties. So we try to implement the same type of ruling, especially when we can't have neighbors talking to neighbors on a county line and next thing you know, hey, Tuscula does this and you guys do this and, and we got neighbors fighting. So yeah, this does mirror our neighboring counties.
Okay. Any more questions for that? We'll put this on the consent agenda?
Well, I think it should be a motion, don't you? Oh, what's, what do you think, Chair?
We adapt it, so I'm not quite sure. I defer to Madam Fettin, Madam Clerk. Do we need a separate motion?
I believe consent agenda would be...
Would that work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unless you are going to request a roll call vote on it.
No, just easier to find unless you've, you know, you've often cited that. If something like, you're looking for something, it's hard to find it in consent.
I think what, prior to updating, uploading that to the website, Drain Commissioner Hood could add the motion number at the bottom of the first page, and then that would always be able to be referenced back. And I just think that that would be a very easy cross-reference and solve any need to look back at that.
Would that keep the chairman from reading the, the whole agreement?
It will. But consent agenda should be fine for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Thank you there. Move on to number six, the Wolverine Power Systems Agreement, Mr. Mike Miller.
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
Yeah, so what we have is Wolverine Power Systems has supplied us with an agreement. We are under an agreement with them currently, but what this does is add in the new generator at the building across the street. So the total agreement for this per year is $8,860. This provides basically two visits per year per generator and then a four-hour, what they call a load bank, where they put the generator under a load for four hours straight to make sure that it operates within specifications from the manufacturer. And we've used them for a number of years now and I've been very happy with their, with their service. So I'd like to get this approved if it's agreeable to you.
Which generators does this cover?
This covers the jail generator, the annex state police post, the portable generator and the new building, the people's building.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes.
Mike, how much warranty do we get on that new generator across the street? Is that a two-year? You know?
I'd have to look, but I believe, I believe it's a year.
Okay.
I'd have to go back and check.
That's okay.
Now, do we already have an agreement in place for the generators you just said, or have we just had?
We have an agreement currently for everything but the new building. So this would add the new building's...
Well, is the price of our agreement that we had?
That was, this is a new agreement, so of course they up the price on every, all of them. So we went from, it's going to be just about $2,700 increase.
Do we have more questions for Mike on this?
Just Chairman, so the total is what, is it 50 cents?
Eighty-eight hundred.
Eighty.
Yeah, I'd like to do both options, the, the optional two, I'm sorry, it's a two-dollar load bank for the $3,150, and that covers all of the generators.
Chairman, so Mike, what do they do when they come out? The way you know. What do they do when they come out to check these?
So they do what they call a minor and a major. So the major visit is usually done in the spring where they go through, they change the oil, they check the valves, they check, they basically go through everything, change spark plugs, basically a tune-up. In the spring and in the fall, they come and do what they do, a minor, where they just basically look everything over, make sure that it's good, make sure the battery chargers are working, the block heaters are working, everything, get it ready for winter. And then also in the spring, when they do the major, they'll usually at the same time do the load bank test.
Thanks.
And Chairman, for a question for Mike, Mike, don't you have a schedule of some type to where you start? I'm just making this up. Once a month, you start your generators or how do you do that internally?
Most of the generators right now, I'll start on Monday morning around 7:00 AM.
Automatically.
Yeah. They're on an automatic schedule.
I see.
Or right now.
But they don't switch, they just run?
Yeah, they just start and run. They're not under a load, they're just one of the...
Exercise.
I see. Okay, no further questions, Chairman.
So we have a motion for this?
You can probably put this on the consent agenda as well.
It'd be a quick meeting on Thursday.
Consent agenda.
Would you put the motion number underneath there or the consent? Would you put something underneath it as you suggested before or?
That would be up to Mr. Miller if that would help him and his tracking of that. That would be his decision to put that on his agreement so that he has it for his tracking.
That would be fine.
Just sounds like a great idea when you mention it.
It's how we do things in my office, so of course it's great.
I see.
Okay. So we'll put that on the consent agenda for Thursday. Opening bids for the Michigan State Police parking lot.
Yes, I have three bids. This is for repair of the rear, well, their north lot, or actually be the west lot, depending on how you look at it, for the Michigan State Police Post. The first bid, envelope is not labeled, so I don't know who it's from. It is from TBD Construction Services from Grand Rapids, Michigan. And their bid is $29,325. And just as an FYI, we have $25,000 in the budget. The next bid is from Pyramid Paving and Contracting from Bay City. And their bid is $38,090. And the last bid I have is from Jaeger Asphalt and Concrete from Carlton, Michigan. My gosh, the glue on this thing. Their bid for that project is $22,770. And I'd like to review these and come back to you on Thursday with a recommendation.
Just out of curiosity, Chairman, if I may ask Mike a question? Who typically has done our lots in the past through the bid process?
So majority of our lots have been done by Jaeger Asphalt, and there was another company that's done a few, and that was Blackjack. We didn't have such good luck with Blackjack. But Jaeger has done quite a few projects for us.
No further questions?
We'll make sure that they're all been the same thing, right?
Yes.
Any more questions, Mr. Mike?
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Move on to number eight, Tuscula County Medical Care Facility, fund transfer request, Erica Dibble.
I received the request from Maggie Root of Tuscula County Medical Care Facility. It's a standard transfer that we typically do a couple times a year. She provided me with all of the details in the packet.
Okay. We motion this, their consent agenda is also? Consent agenda? Any more, any questions for your accountants?
Chairman, just related to the transfers and looking at them, from your perspective, they're all covered through, they have the cash and, okay. No further questions.
Move on to number nine, review the provision of government services, PGS, fund usage tracker.
I'm trying to pull it up on my screen, I apologize, one moment here. There we are. So as we discussed last meeting, we were going through all of the previous motions, looking through all the historical records. We also compared what was approved to what was actually spent. And on the last page, that gives you the totals. So the current remaining balance in that, between ARPA and PGS, is $2,184,369.98. Below that, you'll see the estimated expenditures, the budgeted expenditures for 2025. So if we use the remaining balance to go toward our 17% reserve, that would use up the remaining $2,184,000. Now, again, that's reserved, so it would still be in the account. However, if it's reserved, then we should try not to touch it, it's a reserve.
You know, this takes, takes me back to when we first went to the 17%. That was the question I asked, are you using any of the provision of government services money to establish Tuscula? And there was, I was told emphatically, no, I have not, but in fact, there were.
Well, I wasn't here then.
I understand, but I'm just...
So this is really up to... So, this is really up to the board as to what, do you want to set it aside and use it as reserve? Or continue to use fund balance as reserve, which this is in the fund balance? So it's, it's really, what do you, if I want to do, what do you want to set aside? And do you want it set, do you want me to set up another line item so that it is set aside? Currently, it is bulked in with the fund balance unassigned.
Well, Chairman, when you say the fund balance unassigned, what is in the fund balance at the moment? It's, this is substantial number, so as I remember the fund balance, and I know we're on modified accruals, we really don't know until you make the adjustments at the end of the year. Can this, fund, I guess the question, can the fund balance from your short time here support this kind of expense?
Well, the fund balance, so in the fund balance, which I have a, a page for each of you, if you'd like, there's the non-spendable 510, we talked about in the past, a medical marijuana set aside of 3,000, the marine safety set aside of 15,000, and then in unassigned, there's 6,687. So.
And that, this is part of that?
That is part of it.
Where did the 6 million come from, do you know? Do I have to go back and look at the 24, or the 25 projections, but there's in fact 6 million in unassigned? Because it's, the next question I was going to ask, what, where's the money going to come at the end of the year when we start doing our transfers out, we start balancing the budget? Obviously, reserves are important, but it's taken a substantial amount, I mean, if there's actually $2 million in the GSP, and you mentioned ARPA, I thought ARPA was over a long time ago because we had to go to GSP, otherwise we couldn't use it.
It, it is, I just included it in the history for you.
All right, so.
So you can see it separated, ARPA, true ARPA was 147,979, and then the 10 million was the PGS that was accounted as lost revenue in 2022.
So the available meaning of PGS was 2.1, which I remember Clayette had like 1.9, or I don't know. And she took, she planned on taking, she projected 651,000 out of that this year, just because of the deficit. I'm just trying to put this together in terms of, of, is it wise to take it out of PGS, which we obviously didn't want to use in pro operation, but, or is it wise to take it out of this unassigned, which I don't know where the 6 million, where it came out of, um, because from last year, Clayette, and she hasn't refuted it yet, we're in the deficit, we're headed in a railroad track to the deficit, so I'm encouraged with the 6 million, but I'm just trying to understand.
The 6 million is encompassing all of the funds, I, or not all of the funds, the non-spendable restricted marine and unassigned, unassigned is 5,800, I apologize, I misspoke, but 5,800 in unassigned.
Well, that's.
So, close.
May have misspoken, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. So, in the tracker that my team and I, including Clayette, reviewed deeply before we brought this to you today, we reviewed every single expenditure that was approved as ARPA slash PGS. So that included finding things such as, there was one, um, line item that we received a credit back on. That credit should go back to this line item. So it did in the general ledger went back, however, on the PGS tracker, it wasn't updated. So we went back through to make sure everything that the board had approved was accounted for, any credit that was issued was accounted for, any non-spent funds was accounted for. So that is why that number is slightly different than what Clayette had previously presented, plus we did add in any of the 2025 approvals as well.
So Erica, at a higher level, why would Clayette project a 600, I rounded up, 51,000 deficit this year? When we have $6 million in unassigned, does that mean that we have enough expense coming in, outflows or whatever, that's going to consume that 6 million plus the, and give us another 600, you know, almost 651,000? You see what I'm talking about, because she projected a 650 deficit?
So, we are working on those projections to update them for you, um, and that's coming, but I needed to get this piece of the puzzle complete before I move on to that.
Well, that's okay, it just gives us a seg, it gives us a window
Yes.
in terms of, okay, what is it, is it, are we going to be, should we use PGS? Or, which is being recommended here, or should we use unassigned, which it just doesn't make sense yet, so that's what you're working on?
We are working on that, yes, now, we have budgeted expenses for 2025 for all funds, for the whole package, the whole budget of 17 million. So, we are now taking the PGS, all of the audited 2024 numbers, and we're putting that into our forecast, and we are building to see where are we at right now today, and then where are we going? But I had to finish these numbers to be able to put that in there, to get an accurate base to move forward with the projections. So I'm bringing them to you piece at a time, and, so that way you have something, you know that we're working on something, you know that we are moving toward what you're requesting, which is the forecast, specifically five-year, but first we have to have a moment in time.
An updated five-year from what she projected last time.
Correct. So that is what we're working on next.
The Chairman, the drift here, I think everyone's caught this, is that there's a question on how much fund, first of all, which account do we draw from, unassigned or PGS? Because in my, my world, looking at what was projected, all we had left was PGS, there wasn't a whole lot of, as Clayette projected. And as Angie said, there's a 500,000 increase in property taxes for this year, and there wasn't a whole lot left to, uh, for revenue. And my concern is at the end, when then Clayette talked about transfer outs as being the major, and she produced a report on that, a major contributor to our deficit, which we can't avoid that. It's not too late and it's not too early, because we're going in, I guess, budgeting maybe, and negotiations, and, um, the rapidity that we sort of get a foundation of where we're at is going to be essential. Anyway, Chairman, I'm just sort of, uh, thinking out loud there in the sense that financially we're.
It's going to be interesting to see, see where we're landing, because Clayette came back with the projections after she came back, and she wasn't here that long, and a lot of different, a lot of it started, and now that we've got everything placed, everything back in place, it's going to be interesting now to have, maybe you and, um, Clayette, you know, give us a rundown on how it, you know, that way if we have other questions that you can ask, because Clayette projected some certain things that you wasn't here when she did that.
Correct.
And that way, you know, we get answers, but it's good, it's going to be, I'm going to be looking forward to getting those projections for sure.
And it's coming, and like I said, we're working on it, but I wanted to bring what I, what we had completed to you, so you're aware where we're at, and that you don't think that, um,
Which is pretty good.
that your request is going ignored.
We've got up and down, up and down, with the GPS, where, where is that, where is that, but that which is good too.
This is step one of your request, so I wanted you to be there.
Chairman, I've got a question for Erica, so do you suggest we take the PGS funds and put it in its own separate for right now, and then to see actually where we're at? Or what are you suggesting?
I would like to see it on its own line item, yes. It would still be unassigned in its category, because that's what it is, unassigned, it's, it's not a restricted, uh, fund balance, but I would like to see it on its own line item. And to, um, utilize what the Drain Commissioner had said, you know, everybody asks about that. So if I could see it, and you could see it on a specific line item, I think that that would put your mind at ease, and you would know what, where is, where, where's our balance? However, you know, it's, it is merged together in unassigned, and
See, I think.
was that at your direction?
When Clayette was first, when we first started, if my memory serves me correctly, this was in its own, on its own. And then somehow it got put into the general fund. I'd rather see it go back to where we have, we know what we got in the PGS fund.
I don't believe we can put it into its own fund, because the PGS or the, the ARPA is complete, but we could make another line item.
That's what I was going to say, can you put in another line item? Yeah.
So your bottom line in the general fund will not be affected, however, you'll see it in its own line.
Chairman, I should lose, you raise a question there that baffles me, um, originally, the ARPA was in its own fund. But with the restrictions and the timeline it ended, and Clayette transferred it to a separate line item.
Right.
Right? It was in a separate line item, now what you're saying, somehow, they got rolled up out of that line item, which was separate, into the general fund. And who would have done that?
I can tell you who done it, because that's the question, I went in there and asked them, where's this money? Oh, that's gone, that's over here now, that's, that money is gone. That's what, my, his answer to me was, I said, it can't be gone, we got $2 million and some dollars in there, I want to see that money. And he says, well, and so that was one of my, my arguments, is wherever it went, it needs to get back to where it was.
But Neil, that was in the middle of the year, Clayette was at the end of the year, and she made the projections, at the end of the year financials.
She separated it, I believe, for you, but in the actual GL, it's in one line item. She separated it for you, to make it clear to you.
That's like bait and switch.
However, you know, she came in, she came in for a brief moment to try to help you balance the budget, she, she just used, you know.
Well, it wasn't brief, she produced some pretty interesting reports that were pretty compelling at the time, which I dove into her with her, and that's what I rely on. But going back, um, wherever it went, Chairman, I don't know, whatever needs to be done.
Let's fix it.
Yeah, that's a good answer. I, I got another question, going back on page one, is there 144,000 left over in the, in the PGA, or the, the appropriation we did for the People's Building?
No. What, wait a minute.
On page one, or at least on that page one. It's the Revenue Spending Reports, Capital Improvement Fund, PBS, People's Building.
Are you, you moved on to the next, the next item?
I, I just shifted because this other topic got so overwhelming that.
He just jumped to the next topic.
He's reading boy.
Okay.
He's done with the bait and switch.
Now, now that I'm keeping up, okay. So, yeah, so what we did is, we wanted to show you what we've spent to date on those, uh, on the building.
So, again, just reading across the bottom line there, I know we, we appropriated, uh, like 2 million dollars or something, and my question to like in the past was, where are we at in our spending? Did we go over, was it within the allotment that we had? And so, looking at the balances, 1231, 2025, it shows 144. Assuming that's what's left from that 2 million dollars?
144?
Second to the last.
I think we, 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 we put away 2,200, I think I did, and we're, and, and we've got 144,000 dollars left to pay, I believe, right, is that what that says?
Is that what it means?
No.
It says expenditure.
Balance, I apologize, I, my screen may blow this up a little, so I can read that. Well, what we've spent to date, the, the columns do not align necessarily with the headings, and I apologize for that. So what we've spent to date is 2,211,866,14.
Okay.
So most of that was from the PGS, which it is on the PGS tracker as well. What was approved versus what was spent is also on the PGS tracker.
But wasn't it 2,34,000, is that what we have?
So, yes, uh, Erica, my question is, the balance as of 1231, 2025, 144,772,86, that's what we owed as of that date, was that, was that paid, or are we done with the PGS?
So that, the, the column headings did not align, so the 144,000 was the balance as of 1231, 2024. The balance as of 1231, which would, so balance meaning what was spent. I believe, that cannot be right for 2024.
So, Chairman.
I apologize.
If I could reframe your question there.
Yes, please.
I think what the board is looking for, Commissioners, is the project is, the project, I think, is complete. So did we meet within the appropriation, was the expense within the appropriation? Did it go over the appropriation somehow? And if it did, what do we owe out of, that was out of PGS, those funds, ARPA, PGS? What's the status? Is that what we're looking for?
I, I believe what I, I, I asked when we first got it was, Mike, you laughing, you know, it was like, at one point.
I think what you're looking for, Erica referred to is back in the PGS, it's highlighted in, I can't find mine, maybe it's Saturday, I don't know. It's on page three, Tuscola County Spaces.
Page three of the tracker?
Yes.
Okay, Tuscola County Spaces.
Yes, thank you.
That was the 2, 2,150, 153,000, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
That's what was projected, right, or is that what we spent?
I believe that is what we spent, but I do know, I'm, I missed it. Here. I do know that there is still a final bill yet coming, they're not done with the checklist or punch list, because we have retainage held back until that's done, I don't know what that amount of retainage is off the top of my head, but there's still a final invoice yet to come, once they're done to our satisfaction with the punch list. And then they can bill us for what we've retained over the project.
So Chairman, with that, I, I guess what, at the highest level question, we're trying to figure out, because of the earlier, when it, for me, was overwhelming, in a sense, we don't know, we have more to come on the PGS and unassigned. How much exposure do we have, and you don't know that till you get your final bill, beyond what we already know now, that would have to come from PGS?
Well, the county does know, I just don't know off the top of my head, I don't know if Erica knows, because we have, now, again, I'm going to go back to our former, former controller, Mr. Hammerbocker, said that he had an account set up to hold 10%, which would be in the retainage. And a knowledge that exists somewhere, I just don't know how much is in it.
In the final bill, they use retainage. So the retainage was, was paid in the final bill, on their last.
We haven't gotten a final bill.
But on the last bill, it said remaining balance due, including retainage,
Okay.
which was less than the amount we had retained. So it was paid using the retainage amount. We had 108 in retainage, and the final bill was whatever, I don't remember, less than that. So the, the balance on that last invoice was like $2,500, that is not paid yet, on the, I don't mean final, final invoice, the most recent.
If I, if I remember right, I, I asked to do the little bit 1.95 or something when we started.
It was like one, a little over, almost 1.9 million.
Okay, we put 2.2 million aside from the PGS, if I remember right.
Yes.
Aside for that, but I think our question here is, we know we have ten years, then we exceed the 2.2 million that we put aside for, just that project, which I think we did by a little bit.
Yes, I think that's what that PGS is. Yes, I think that's what that PGS is showing, like 6,000.
You know what I'm saying? So that's, I think I was questioning like one point. We put the 2.2 in there because we know there's going to be change orders and there's going to be this and there's going to be that. So I think our question was, did we come any under that? Or did we go above it? I think we went above it a little bit.
I think we went, I think that's, yes, that's what the PGS is showing is about just under $7,000 over what we budgeted.
Okay. That's, that's, I guess what we...
And there was also additional approvals by the board for furniture and those sorts of things that did not, was not included in the original quote.
That was not included.
Which is what my spreadsheet is trying to show you is the whole picture. So there was furniture involved. There were other approvals in addition to the 2.1.
Right.
So we're like 7,000 over on the building? Is that what you're trying to say? At this point in time, yes. Okay.
How much over?
About 7,000 right now. Without getting the finals, probably, we probably have one more bill coming, probably, I would say.
Yeah, I'll have to get with Erica. We'll have to look at what the retainage is or isn't. But there's going to be something coming, yeah. But I thought, I thought the last bill would be for the retainage.
I thought so too. However, when we looked, when we were looking into this, the fine, that bill that we received wiped out the retainage. So they were requesting the retainage, but there is still a small amount due. Their overall bill less what they're requesting left a balance.
We'll have to figure that part out, but...
We're close. We came pretty close with the 2.2.
Yes, yeah, we're real close.
But all in all, the 2.2, we appropriated, as you just said, for the furniture. It looks like it's 142,000 or something like that. 142, whatever. I mean, it would be interesting at some point to know, what did it actually cost the county to refurbish the building? When it's all said and done?
Isn't that, isn't that what you provided though?
Yes.
The costs?
Yes.
You have it there today.
So far, we have spent...
So that's your final answer in terms of the project costs? 7,000 over what the 2.2 that was allocated?
Well, I think, I don't think that includes the furniture.
Plus the furniture.
Plus the furniture.
Correct. So all-inclusive, including the furniture, we've spent 2,211,886,14.
So with the furniture, it's just still over the 2.2 we allocated for?
Yes.
Right.
Because you approved furniture of a certain amount, but the actual expenditure did not, did not reach the amount that you had approved.
So the object here, or what I was driving towards is there's not a substantial amount that you have to pull out of someplace to make up. So that sets that aside in terms of financial exposure or liability yet. And it's somewhere like 7,000.
Yeah, I mean, we, we were pretty close to target.
Good.
Good.
No further questions, sir.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Thanks everybody for the questions. I don't see anything under old business. Move on to finance technology, I'll share with Mr. Barbour.
Well, I think we had a little portion of finance update here earlier as it's progressing along to give us a picture of where we're at as we need to make some major decisions here forthcoming. So I'll leave that as it is. But in terms of, of technology? Ian, do you have anything you want to?
You started with employee start. How's the latest greatest thing so far?
Right. Good.
Chairman, I'm just curious. Is that introduction that you used today, is that going to be forthcoming, a little bit defined? The county can make some money? Just curious. There we go. It's sort of like the...
We didn't have much input on that.
No, we didn't have any pictures at all. Probably. No further questions.
Anything I can build on, Commissioner Lewis?
I don't think so. Do you have anything? Nope, I guess not. Back to you.
Personnel, can we still get you out of nothing? No, you don't. Other business is necessary. The courthouse Rosemary gathering request. Just, Chris and Jenna?
Chris and, yeah.
Okay, the other business is necessary. Public comment, if anyone wants to adjust the board. I think that's where I, even with my, left to be hanging there somewhere.
Good morning, commissioners. I just wanted to give you an update that Tuscaloosa County will be administering a November 4th special election. So we have three matters that will be placed on the ballot. Marlet Schools has placed an operating millage. Mayville Schools has placed an operating millage as well as City of Vassar has placed a question to have their charter approved. So we are in the middle of programming and preparing ballots. And we will have our three days of early voting. And then the election day is November 4th. So we're underway in election season. And then we're beginning, excuse me, to prepare for the 2026 season is, if you haven't been watching your Facebook or the news that is, or watching billboards, that's quickly approaching and is going to be, we're anticipating a very busy year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a question, chairman. Of the school villages, is this the first time around?
For, I believe for both of these, it is the first time around. Thank you.
Public comment. Public comment to adjust the board. Let's the record show, public comment was offered and we did have a question about it. Turk Fettin. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We'll move back to Mr. Lewis. It's more to back to Mr. Goodchild. The chairman committed a whole meeting this morning. We want to thank everybody who joined us this morning. And with more discussion, I'll fair to say aye.
Aye.
This motion is adjourned.